Pansky.
Here.
Crowsey.
Here.
Pat.
Here.
Omery.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Present six.
Would you all please stand while Councilperson Pansky leads us in the invocation and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have certificates for our two students. Thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And you are sisters. And I'll ask the elder sister.
So my name is Leslie Lucan. I go to Lurds Academy. I'm a senior and my favorite subject would be band.
I'm Alexa. I go to Lurds Academy. I'm 13 years old. I'm in eighth grade and my favorite subject is math.
Thank you. And here's your certificate and yours. Now you can stay and watch local government at its best or go home and study. Thank you. Looks like they're going home. They never stay either. First on the agenda is a public hearing. This I have to read three times before we take a vote. It is Resolution 17-504. Approve final resolution vacating alley west of South Main Street between Seventh and Eighth Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Second reading, approve final resolution vacating west alley west of South Main Street between Seventh and Eighth Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Third and final reading, Resolution 17-504. Approve final resolution vacating alley west of South Main Street between Seventh and Eighth Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. And Pam, did we have anyone registered to speak to this resolution?
No, I do not.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carrie six.
Next we have an opportunity for citizens to address the council. And if anyone has not signed the kiosk in the hall to speak, I request that you do so now so our city clerk has a record of who will be speaking to the council. Citizens are to address the council. Only statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh. And the common council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates for other electioneering. Pam, did we have anyone registered to speak?
We have quite a few. We will start out with Robert Prehn, 1022 Washington Avenue.
Good evening. Once in a great while, a governing body such as yourself will be confronted with decisions and actions which have impact upon the community for generations to come. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't think I speak in her verbally when I say fate and destiny have brought you to such a place. And I wish to speak on behalf of the redevelopment of Lake Shore Golf Course. On one hand, you have a historic golf course which is precious to many of our fine citizens, but is no longer economically viable. On the other hand, you have a chance to convert 70 percent of this land to a park which be free, open, and usable for all. At the same time, you have the opportunity to keep the headquarters of Oshkosh Corporation right here in our community. Make no mistake, this golf course is not a park. It is off limits to the vast majority of people who do not play golf. No trust petition signs remind us that we are not welcome in this course unless we pay the required green fees. This proposed plan opens this land to everyone, giving more access to what is Oshkosh's greatest resource, our lakes and our rivers. Young and old, disabled and able, will all be able to experience a lakeside park under the proposed plan. But as you know, converting a money-losing golf course to an open public parkway is only part of the conversation. Retaining Oshkosh Corporation is perhaps the most salient challenge you will face. There's a reason why over 238 cities across America are trying to lure Amazon's second headquarters. These cities, from New York, New Jersey, to Denver, Colorado, know nothing helps the community more than a viable and civically responsible business. And folks, we have a business right here in front of us, right now. You have to admit, the colossal economic impact of Oshkosh Corporation is staggering. In Oshkosh alone, we have over 3,500 employees who work to sustain 145 additional local supply chain companies. The overall economic impact exceeds over $150 million to our community. Think of the lives impacted if we lose this organization. Think of the plethora of charities that are supported by the Oshkosh Corporation. Through the charitable works, they have built swimming pools. They have stocked our food pantries. They send our kids to college and tech school. They mentor our young, give food and shelter to our sick and homeless. They have touched the lives of almost every charity in this community. Losing Oshkosh Corporation means more than losing jobs, folks. It means losing our soul. Several communities are competing with us to lure the corporation. They all know we have something unique and something truly special. We here in Oshkosh have been taking all this for granted, like a sunrise on Lake Winnebago. It's always been here for as long as any of us have been alive. But this can all end tomorrow. This, people, is your challenge. And this is your responsibility. And this is your opportunity. Seize it. I implore you all to do all you can do to retain this company, this charitable corporate citizen, this thriving engine of our economy. I urge you to do all you can do to keep Oshkosh Corporation in the very city which proud, which barely, which pro, which bears its proud name. Yes, fate and destiny have brought you to this place and time, much like it did Mayor Al Stevens 100 years ago, when he had the political courage to make a controversial purchase of some land on Lake Winnebago. That land went on to be North Park and later Menominee Park, considered one of the top five municipal parks in the state of Wisconsin. Mayor Stevens and the city council made decisions that positively impact us this very day. 100 years from now, what will be said about all of you? On the shores of Lake Butnamore, will Oshkosh have a jewel of a park, open to the public and accessible to all? And will Oshkosh retain a corporation who will continue to contribute to our prosperity and generations, prosperity and generosity for generations to come? Our children, grandchildren, and beyond have their eyes upon all of you. Seize the opportunity.
Thank you. Pam?
Diane Penson-Stadler, 1123 Buchanan Avenue.
Good evening. I'll keep this really brief. First, let me say, I am a golfer. I love to golf. Anybody who knows me knows that. And we're blessed here to have an abundance of golf courses in our area within 20 minutes. In fact, that's one of the reasons I'm in support of selling a portion of Lake Shore Golf Course for the Oshkosh Corp headquarters. There are many similarly priced alternatives for golfing. And I think perhaps it's time the city stopped competing with them. While I love to golf, I think it's more important to focus on the greater good for all of Oshkosh. And for me, that means keeping Oshkosh Corporation's headquarters here. Very simply, jobs and economic impact trump my love of golf. We know the results of when a major corporation leaves a community. We've seen it in our near neighbors. And I shudder to think what our community might look like should Oshkosh Corp choose to go elsewhere. While some in our community are opposed to the sale of the golf course, I think we have a larger group of citizens who are really excited about the prospect of opening up this area for more public use, whether it's green space, walking, or bike trails. We need to weigh what we stand to gain against what we are at risk of losing. We stand to gain the retention of about 450 professional jobs with an additional potential growth of 200 more jobs. We stand to gain a robust housing market. We stand to gain green space for many more people to enjoy. We stand to gain community pride in bringing the home of Fortune 500 company headquarters. We look to you, the council, to make this decision. This is why we voted for you. We don't need a referendum. We voted for you to make these decisions. We have a council at large. So the decisions you make are for all of us, not a neighborhood, not a particular area, not a subset of the city. I urge you as a city council to be courageous and bold in your decision and do what is in the best interest of the entire community, which is to work hard to keep Oshkosh Corporation here. I leave you with a quote, which I know you're all going to know, but I love it. "Some men see things as they are and ask why. I dream of things that never were and ask, why not?" Robert Kennedy. Thank you.
Pam?
Oops, sorry. Colleen Stadler, 1736 Sanders.
I come today to ask for your assistance. I have the unfortunate to receive a violation code. There's some brush in my yard, as most of you are aware. I'll pay the fine, that's fine. But I would like the ordinance of 17-36 B to be changed. Citizens are not notified if they receive a violation. There's no notification whatsoever. What they get is a fine. They don't get the opportunity to correct before they receive this fine. Unfortunately, our neighborhood is being targeted by a previous disgruntled city employee. I'd like to know what is my course of action? I'd like to know how I can get this ordinance changed. I feel that citizens in Oshkosh should have the opportunity to receive a notification that they're in violence, that's the wrong word, they're in violation of an ordinance, because I don't know them all, and to be given an opportunity to correct it. So I need to learn how I can get this changed.
Lynn, would that be your area?
If the council directs me to take a look at it, it's a policy decision up to the council.
I would agree we should look at it.
Yeah, we should take a look at it, but just you did not receive a fine. That was not a fine. It's a, you received the official letter of the violation at $20. It's a processing fee. As I mentioned in the email I sent back to you, it's a processing fee that was requested by city staff because of the time it takes when a citizen either files a complaint or staff observes a complaint. They have to go out, document it, take pictures, they have to draft a letter, notice, et cetera. So you did not receive a citation. I don't know exactly what the citation cost would have been, but it would have been like $150, $160, I believe, something like that. But I don't know off the top of my head. But that was, you were given a $20 administrative fee for the time that city staff took to investigate the complaint. That's what that $20 fee is. That is not a fine. Just for your information. But I agree, we can take a look at. So in essence, and I'm not here to defend that at this point, just the bottom line is you did not, you got a warning, technically. It was a warning with the administrative fee attached to that letter, not a citation for the violation.
I would like to have the ordinance changed to where citizens are notified of a violation without having a fee of any sort attached, because I feel that that's only fair for the citizens of Oshkosh to say, I don't know all the ordinances.
Correct.
All I'm asking is a neighborly, hey, I see this and it's in violation, and an opportunity to correct that, not an automatic service fee.
We can look at that.
That's all I'm asking.
Okay.
Because as I said, I have an individual that used to work for the city that knows all of these and likes targets neighbors.
Okay. We'll take a look at.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Stadler? I just wanted to mention too, my sincere apologies for not getting to your original email. I unfortunately did not see it. It was in a sea of emails that we're getting regarding other issues going on in the city. So I just seen it today. So sorry I wasn't able to get back to you sooner.
Thank you. I just need a direction.
Sure.
I was instructed by one of the council members that that's what I should do. If I have a calendar in the future, I know not to include all of them in the file.
What do you can?
But I just want this.
Ms. Stadler, did you, I pulled up the email here and I know that we have emailed about this issue as well, that you had received a copy of the municipal code and the appeal form? There is an appeal form you can fill out regarding that service fee?
I received a section, small section. And I received.
It says you should have received the service fee appeal form as well.
I received this. It's in there. Unfortunately, I am not familiar with all the forms, so I am not sure what needs to be filled out, what I need to attach to it to make it complete.
And you have somebody in City Hall here that you're working with specifically on this, or are you still just through email channels at this point?
I feel, um, John.
Okay.
Has been emailing me a little bit.
He's the chief building code enforcement.
He's been kind of helping me a little bit on this situation to understand more of it, because it has taken me, I did ask for a copy of their procedure. They do not have a procedure. It's a discussion of the building, of the structure that comes up. And I just feel that there should be some type of procedure that in the future, this is, this is what should be followed. I mean, I tried to do research and looked into archives. And anytime somebody had, you know, these are going way back, years and years and years, you can see the letters in there stating, you know, that the city official notified so-and-so of this, or given ample time to correct it. I just feel that because there's no procedure in place today, there is not that communication with citizens. I just feel that this ordinance needs to be changed and the procedure needs to be created.
There's room for improvement.
To be fair.
Senator Madge, roll off. You have something to say?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a, Mr. Davis is in the back of the room and he'd be happy to talk to you, ma'am. And as I've heard from council, that's more of an administrative issue than an ordinance issue, but staff will look at that. That's, this isn't the first time we've heard that. There may be something that council may want to revisit from a, from a policy standpoint. But Mr. Davis can answer any questions if you have any questions about how to appeal and things like that. Mr. Davis, if you could just wave your hand so she, she recognizes you, he'd be happy to help you.
Thank you. Pam, who's next?
Tom Castle, 2247 Rip Road.
I'm here tonight to talk about your relationship, the city of Oshkosh's relationship with Oshkosh. And I say that as a relationship because Oshkosh Corp is one of your customers, as are all the citizens of Oshkosh, as are all the businesses in Oshkosh. I'm one of those citizens and one of those businesses. This corporation is coming to you and asking you for a piece of property. And I understand how challenging and tough from an emotional standpoint that is for everyone in the community. But it's an economic decision. The economic decision you're making is one that as your customer, you have to put forward the best possible decision you can. You're meeting in closed session later tonight, I understand, to talk about that. And you need to look at every possibility of how you can give them what they need to stay here. You're a business, just like the other cities and municipalities are a business, and they are competing, just as we are, to get this. We're keeping it, but we're fighting to retain this business. The way we run our businesses, the way all of you do, you know how important it is to keep your biggest customers. This is your biggest customer. This is the opportunity that has been laid in front of you. Wasn't necessarily what you signed up for, but it's what's there. We voted for all of you to be on this council, and now is the time to make a decision that sets Oshkosh ahead and forward for the hundreds of years to come. We've lost opportunities before like this, and we don't want to lose this opportunity or this customer we have. So my, my last thing to say to you is make the financial decision that makes this a no-brainer for Oshkosh Corp to stay in Oshkosh and on Lake Shore.
Pam, who is next?
CJ Williams, 619 West 11th Avenue.
Evening. I got a code violation here again. Been getting them left and right here from the city, for one thing or another. I spent $4,000 last year on a new gutter system for my house. And inspector came over and saw that it was not quite right with the drain by the, by the front of my house was wrong. So what I had to do was just shorten it up by two inches and move it over about three inches. Well, I didn't get that done fast enough for him, so it cost me $50. And then I've been trying to sell some boats and the boats have been in the wrong place at the wrong time. So I keep, last year I got one. At the end of the year, because it looked bad in my backyard, well, it was just before it was going to snow out, so I'm sure that the snow was going to cover it up and it wouldn't bother anybody. I don't have a backyard, I live by South Park. And this year, the same thing went through with the boats. I moved one around and, well, the last, last year too, I got the notice and I was gone for a couple days. So I got home and I didn't open my mail right away. And then I got a notice for a fine for $50 because I didn't take care of this within four days moving this boat. So, okay, same thing happened this year again. Now, I'm getting fined to death here on this. My driveway is gravel and then I've got a little chunk of concrete and then I've got another section off with gravel. It's been there for 20 some years. And I'm parking on it. He says, well, it's not zoned in as your driveway, so you can't park there. And I says, well, you know, I've been parking there for so long. And he says, well, if you're gonna, you gotta get zoned in. So I called the zoning department. They said I can't zone that in because it has to be blacktop or concrete. I says, why? I says, it's just the section where I park on. He says, well, we don't want your gravel going out into the street and plugging up the sewers. Well, I've got dump trucks going up and down my street daily from South Park. And I'm going, I'm not too worried that my gra, little bit of gravel that goes out there, I don't drive much anyhow, but that my gravel is going to plug up the city sewer. So what I wanted to do is see if I could get that zoned in, that little section. It's, um, let's see here, 14 feet deep and 18 feet wide. And I wanted to see if I could get that zoned in without having to spend the money on it to get it blacktopped or concreted. I live on a, my social security and my budget is kind of limited and I've been spending money, I've spent most of my money fixing up the house and they just did the street here, some years back, so I spent $5,000 on that. And now I'm just kind of living off of social security. And I'd like to see if I could get something done so I could get that zoned in. And if I could get this building care of, that wouldn't hurt either. So, any suggestions on how I get this zoned in, other than?
Senator Madge, roll if you want.
And if, if the gentleman's looking for a zoning request, he should contact our zoning administrator, Todd Mew.
I did it. Well, I talked, I talked to him.
But that's the process.
These inspectors are not real easy to work with either. But I gotta get it, see, the thing is, I gotta get it blacktopped or concrete. And I'm trying to save myself some money. That driveway's been there for over 20 years like that. It never bothered anybody. Now all of a sudden, it's a big deal. And I think it's a bunch of crap. And I gotta go and spend extra money, you know, that'll be $1,000 or more just the concrete that, not to mention all these fines I'm getting for moving stuff around in my driveway.
This is the first I've heard of this situation, so I can't help you right off the, right off the top. But you can certainly contact Mr. Davis as well, or my office, about finding out what your resources are. I'm, I'm not familiar with your situation. I'm not sure if there's something, they can go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. A zoning, zoning variances don't get approved by council, they get approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. I don't know if that applies in your case, but I'm sure somebody at zoning, that's in the Community Development Department, they'd be happy to help you.
Well, I can't even get it started in zoning because he said, well, he says he can't touch it because it's not blacktopped or concrete. I mean, that was the end of the discussion with him.
Mark. Mr. Williams, just to inform you, we just updated our city codes and all that has just been approved recently by council. And so that's our code. We'd have to change the code. And at this point, with our healthy neighborhood initiatives and some of our other neighborhood initiatives, we felt that that code is appropriate for neighborhoods. So if the code requires you to blacktop it or concret it, that's, that's the city code.
I already have a gravel driveway.
I understand that, but the bottom line is, it's, it's not just, we don't do the code for one house to the next house, it's citywide code. And so every neighborhood has to abide by the same code. And so we would have to change the zoning code to reflect that, or as Mr. Ross said, you could go to the Code of Appeals and see if they would grant a variance.
My driveway was grandfathered in because it came with the house when I changed that code. I don't know why that can't be grandfathered in as.
Well, that's a request you'd have to make at this point, because Mr. Mayor is just following our administrative code.
Mr. Williams, I suggest you talk to Mr. Davis, who is in the back. There's not much we really can resolve here because none of us really have any.
It sounds like it's a code issue, so it's an administrative issue, which is staff, so, but you can certainly talk to Mr. Mayor's supervisor if you, if you're not satisfied with that.
Who would I talk to?
Mr. Davis, Ellen Davis, our Community Development Director. He's out in the hallway talking to the previous person who spoke.
Okay. Otherwise, thank you. I think you've been doing a pretty good job with Oshkosh improvements and looking forward to South Park being done. It's like a horse going back there right now. Should be good.
Pam, who would like to address the council? Thank you.
John Casper, 120 Jackson Street.
Evening. I'm John Casper with the Oshkosh Chamber. The Chamber is a business association that represents about 1,000 members in Oshkosh. Those businesses employ about 28,000 people in, in Oshkosh, and we're representing the business community. Here to talk about Oshkosh Corp. As an organization, we strongly support the proposal that we're, that we're.
As an organization, we strongly support the proposal that would retain Oshkosh Corporation in the community. We see that as essential, that we do everything possible to keep Oshkosh Corp. in Oshkosh. Over the last several weeks, you know, I can tell you, I have not run into anybody who doesn't support that. I believe you guys support that also. We're very fortunate to have them here in Oshkosh. Not too many communities our size can claim to have a Fortune 500 company in their home. Oshkosh Corporation is an economic engine for the community and also the region. It provides jobs, good-paying jobs, family-sustaining jobs, provides a business base for a deep and large local supply chain, has global distinction for our community. They're a world-class organization, and truly touches the lives of our friends, our families, and our neighbors. You're in a challenging time right now, and the time is now to claim Oshkosh as our own. Oshkosh Corp. is our own. We are competing with at least four other communities that are not in Oshkosh for these headquarters. Consequently, we need to be very bold and competitive in our packages in order to compete with these other communities. And not just compete, but to win. We need to win this one. As you discuss your offer, we urge the council to advance an offer that will win it, and we cannot do anything less. A loss of Oshkosh Corp. to another community would be a body blow that we would feel for decades, and I don't think we could ever get over that. We only have one chance to keep Oshkosh Corp. where it belongs, and it belongs in Oshkosh. We cannot afford to lose them. The company is too important to the city and its future and the quality of life of our citizens. As you deliberate and develop your proposal, we ask the council, as an opportunity, to do something exceptional, distinctive, and historic. Other communities are vying for these headquarters and have everything to gain, but we have everything to lose. And I hate losing. I know you hate losing. We need to win this one. The council needs to put an aggressive proposal forward where Oshkosh Corp. can not say no. Now is the time for us to work together to secure our future.
Pam?
Stephanie Carlin, 2803 Stony Beach Street.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Last week, I sent all of you a copy of a presentation that was given at our regularly scheduled board meeting for the Board of Education. Tomorrow night, the Board of Education will vote on a resolution to support Oshkosh Corporation and recognize the importance of the partnerships it has with the Oshkosh Area School District. Our multiple partnerships fulfill our strategic objective to make our students college, career, and community-ready. As an elected official, it is my job to do what is best for our students, and keeping Oshkosh Corporation in Oshkosh is without doubt what's best for our students. Let me tell you why Oshkosh Corporation is important to our school district. First, they provide people, talented people, people who come to our classrooms and speak about careers in engineering and manufacturing, people who volunteer time to mentor our students during STEM nights, people who are willing to serve as mentors for young engineers and participate in job shadow days, volunteers that work with high school students in Project Grille. The Oshkosh Corporation has a people-first culture. Thankfully, that people-first culture extends to our community, and for that, we are grateful. In fact, across our entire community, Oshkosh Corporation employees serve, there are over 100 Oshkosh employees that serve in multiple leadership boards and roles in our community. Oshkosh Corporation also provides our school district with significant resources and funding, funding for programs like Wave Robotics, funding for Finance Park, which is part of the eighth-grade curriculum program on teen money, which every student must complete. They also provide resources for Manufacturing Day and grant access to facilities as part of a global career exploration program. Next year, Oshkosh Corporation will be providing our students with jobs as part of the Integrated School-to-Work Initiative. We also have the Youth Apprenticeship Program, which enables our students to explore career paths in manufacturing and engineering. Finally, the charitable donations from Oshkosh Corporation directly impact our students. Oshkosh Corporation gave 2.3 million last year to charities, and roughly 80% of these donations stayed in the Fox Valley at organizations like the Boys and Girls Club in Oshkosh and the Oshkosh Area United Way. Each of these charities provide important services to our students. Much of what Oshkosh Corporation does for our community goes unnoticed. That's largely due to their modest corporate culture. They do not advertise their donations, and they do not seek accolades. For that reason, you probably don't know that they allowed the Global Academy at West High School this summer to share $16,000 with the Boy Scouts of America by working concessions during the 100th Celebration. You also probably aren't aware that they sponsored the amazing Oshkosh event with the Mid-Morning Kiwanis Club, which raised $18,000 to fund programs that benefit children in Oshkosh. There are many examples such as these. The benefit to having access to a Fortune 500 company is immeasurable to this community. Other communities envy our position. Other communities would stop at nothing to have this organization in their backyard. And as we are seeing in the headlines these days, we must do whatever it takes to keep Oshkosh Corporation in Oshkosh. I implore the council to invest in Oshkosh Corporation by providing them a world-class headquarters site. Our children, our community, and our future will benefit. Thank you for your service.
Ms. Carlin, can you help us invest in Oshkosh Corporation?
I would love to.
Who would like to speak next?
Ken Arneson, 1230 Welch Haven Drive.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address you regarding an important decision you will be making. I am the president of Evergreen Retirement Community, and have been a part of this community, which has been a part of the community for the last 50 years. In addition, I am a partner in a small business in Oshkosh, and have been proud to live here for the last 22 years and raise my children. For a community to assume an organization will stay simply because of a name or history warns caution. One only needs to look to Peoria, Illinois, where Caterpillar moved its global headquarters to Chicago, along with 350 jobs. A local example where we almost lost an entire corporation in 2009 was Mercury Marine. If you remember, Stillwater, Oklahoma, was celebrating. Hundreds of jobs moved. But we were fortunate that we were able to retain these jobs and secure a future for the community of Fond du Lac. As a leader of an organization with 300 employees, we need more people to move to Oshkosh. We're not in a position to have any organization, and especially an organization such as Oshkosh Corp. lead this community. Remember, the decisions that are made here by this council will affect many other organizations, both large and both small. This project also has the opportunity to spur significant growth in an area that Evergreen currently is also a part of. If you drive along Oshkosh Avenue, you can see deterioration. You can see businesses such as Robbins that are no longer there, or the Sears Building. Instead, imagine the front door that could be created by the development that would occur with Oshkosh Corp. This project will spur development in an area that needs help. In a world of competition, your decisions will have long-range impacts. You have been very gracious, and I thank you for the time you have taken to listen to many different views. But now is the time for action. Now is the time for this council to make a competitive offer that no other community will match. By developing an offer that no other community can match, you will also send a long-range message to many other organizations within this community and many of its citizens that this council is committed to not only the current state of this community, but a long-term prosperity that will occur. Thank you.
Pam, who's next?
Mark Lasky, 3190 Old Orchard Lane.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for your service. I've sent a letter to the council outlining my specific request, so I'm going to speak a little off-script. So bear with me. I brought some notes in case I wandered too far. I'm from Oshkosh, was born here. Take you back to 1974. I can already see some of the sideburns if I look real close there. But I was here when UW Oshkosh was UW Zero, when the Downtown Mall was one of the first in the nation, a thriving mall. Downtown Hotel was a thriving hotel, went kind of dilapidated, and now it's thriving back again. I can tell you, after moving back here as an adult seventeen years ago, I've never been so excited for the prospects of Oshkosh. My wife's from the East Coast, and we met, I would tell her that, "I'm from Oshkosh," and I'd get offended when people didn't know where that was. They knew the overalls, but Oshkosh has so much more to offer than that. I've always said, one of the things, I think the biggest thing about Oshkosh is that we suffer from low self-esteem. And I could never really understand why. The state's third-largest university, Fortune 500 company, other tremendous manufacturers here, businesses, waterways, recreational opportunities. I mean, we don't have hurricanes, so there's a lot to appreciate about this area. And we're at the precipice of, I think, an historic time. And it's not overstating the impact that an organization like Oshkosh Corporation has. Some of the other speakers had talked about, you know, the statistics, and all those are true, and they're important. I've served, I'll personalize a little bit. I've served alongside some of the Oshkosh Corporation executives on nonprofits. I've seen them dedicate their time in my daughter's classroom through junior achievement, and they want to be here. And we need to make sure that they are here. And specifically to that, what I would say is, we need to grant them the land, we need to provide the infrastructure, and if the TIF is part of the proposal too, then so be it. And what I would say, if you're worried about precedent, then to that, I'd say, "Well, the next time a 100-year-old company with the name Oshkosh and provides 3,500 jobs in our city wants a sweetheart deal, they can have it too." But that's something that's earned, and it's something that the community will benefit from, all aspects. It's not us versus them. It's us and us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Pam, who's next?
Bill Wyman, 1372 Wabu Avenue.
Hello. Short. Having a Fortune 500 company as the gateway to our community is an opportunity that this community cannot pass up. Today, the Chamber, GoEDC, and the Community Foundation met and agreed to work together with the city to make this happen. These organizations have helped the city in the past and will again, knowing the importance of keeping Oshkosh Corporation headquarters here in Oshkosh. City councilors, you really have a big decision to make for the future of Oshkosh. In today's world, big risk achieve big goals. Ask Oshkosh Corp. about that. Not long ago, they were in the same situation. They had to take big risks to get where they are today. They are confident, and it has paid off. Councilors, you also have to be confident. Your confidence will pay off too. And all of us are behind you. Please do everything you can to make this happen. It's so important. Thank you.
I have nobody else registered to speak at the citizen statements.
Thank you, everyone who spoke. We will now move on to consent agenda items. These are items of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll-call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Pam, is there anyone who registered to speak to any item on the consent agenda?
Yes. For item number 11, Resolution 17-509, I have Carmella Upton Graff, 75 Farmstead Lane.
Good evening. As she mentioned, my name is Carmella Upton Graff, and we're part of North Park Neighborhood Association, and we've been in association for about a year now. And we have totally embraced the idea of greater neighborhoods and have taken advantage of everything the city has to offer to improve their neighborhood. And so we have two little small projects that we're working on. In our neighborhood, there's not a whole lot of green space or a park atmosphere of what we can use the neighborhood grants for that aspect. And so we're looking to just improve the median entrance that goes into our neighborhood with some low-life level landscaping that we will take care of, us and our neighbors. And then also, our neighborhood backs up to County Park. And last year, or the last couple of years, County Park did that whole initiative where they did the blacktop around the whole park. And so now they have a path that goes up to our neighborhood, and we're just looking to blacktop a little section that's in our neighborhood that will match up to the County Park's blacktop. So we're just asking for your approval for that.
Thank you. Pam, is there anyone else that would like to speak to anything on the consent agenda?
No one else.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
Slow move.
Second.
Discussion. There is one item that I'd like to talk to real quickly. It's Resolution 17-505. And there's a word in there that I think has caused us some confusion over the past, which is the word oversight. And I spoke with James Robbie today to get an explanation of exactly what this does entail. So with that, I will turn it, it doesn't mean what we think it means, is like my point.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed earlier, this project is a community development project, but in this case, you know, the term oversight is used as, to describe, you know, watching over the construction of the contractor. In this case, AECOM is functioning as the city's agent to make sure that the work that the contractor performs is in compliance with the specifications and the plans, because cities does not have adequate staff to be able to man the construction of this project.
So they serve as almost a project manager?
Correct.
I would suggest that in the future, let's not use that word oversight, and let's be more descriptive of what's going on.
Yes, I've already worked with AECOM, and they will make sure that their future agreements are revised to say something more to the effect of construction and environmental management or documentation, because that really is the services they're providing.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Mr. Robbie, on that 17-505, we've been using AECOM quite a bit for a lot of our environmental things. And I noticed, I think it's in the CIP, we're going to have to replace some of the Riverwalk by the Leach. When's the last time we bid it out, that type of services? Tried to get bids from other companies.
The Riverwalk, I would have to defer that.
I mean, as far as like what AECOM does for the city, more or less.
For the environmental side of things, I cannot recall when there was a bid.
The reason I bring it up is several council members were, we attended last week at the League of Municipalities Conference in Appleton, and there were like five other companies. And I think it's time we maybe want to do a competitive bid, or at least put an RFP together, and, you know, maybe give someone else a chance. We've been, like I say, nothing against AECOM, but we have been using them for a long time, and are we getting what we really think we're getting from them. And then Mayor, thank you. Actually, this one's for you too, Mr. Robbie. 17-508, in our memo, under the fiscal impact, there's some discussion that the additional truck traffic may, however, exasperate deterioration of Bradley Street, which is all ready in a poor condition and will require improvement in the future, which is not currently in the five-year CIP. Is there any, has there been any staff discussion about moving that road up? Is there any, has there been any staff discussion about moving that road up into the CIP since we're getting ready to talk about the CIP in the budget? I'm concerned that if, we've had some issues on Hughes, where we've had to do some work because of the bad shape of those roads, that for bringing in more semis, which we want, obviously, having carless transport here in an industrial park is an awesome opportunity, but the street's in bad shape, I think we need to look at moving that project up somehow. I don't know if it needs just asphalt overlay, or if we need the whole project, you know, sewer water, everything.
Yeah, at this point, I would have to work with staff to evaluate the needs of the street, you know, if it is just an overlay. You know, we do have the asphalt overlay program annually in the CIP to extend the life of streets, which is the program that we're going to be using to get Hughes Street repaved. We're hoping to bid that out, you know, this fall for spring construction. So, you know, there's always some project funding in there that we could look at.
As we heard from the business community, you know, we need to keep businesses, this is a new business coming in at our community, we've seen their trucks probably around the area, but they're building a new terminal. I sure would like to have the roads in good shape for them. And then Mayor, just have one more question. Is Mr. Wiley back there? Thank you for coming up. Just a question, since we're bordering up to the County Park and that's Winnebago County's jurisdiction, have we talked to them and made them aware that if we approve this, that that blacktop will be matching up to their property?
Yes, we have been in touch with Rob Way with the County Parks, and they are cool with it.
Okay. And then just one other, this is kind of a general for all of these types of neighborhood improvements. I've had several citizens question how they get notified. Are we sending, if, does everybody in the neighborhood association get a letter that you are now part of a neighborhood association and that there's meetings and things you need to get involved in? Because one of the questions I got was, who are these planning people and who gives them all the authority? And so I just want to make sure that all our citizens that are in these neighborhood associations are getting opportunity to have feedback.
Yes, and actually, they do send out mailings. So they generally send out, we had two new neighborhood associations formed this year, and they did send out mailings for their general body meetings, general membership meetings that came up.
Okay.
So all the residents should be getting notifications.
All right, very good. It's awesome what they're doing, and I will be supporting all these projects and the work that your department's done and the neighborhood associations and HN1 working with it. It's, I think, has really improved the quality of our neighborhoods, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no other council member that'd like to speak, so would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
There were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll go on to pending ordinances. The first is ordinance 17-522, approved intermediate attachment of properties from Townsville Goma effective March 1, 2018, per approved cooperative plan, Zone B generally located north of State Road 91, west of US Highway 41, south of State Road 21. Pam, is there anyone that had registered to speak to this?
No, I do not have anyone.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next, we have ordinance 17-523, approve zone change from SMU Suburban Mixed Use District to SMUPD Suburban Mixed Use District with planned development overlay located at 3,001 South Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, did anyone register to speak to this pending ordinance?
No one.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the role.
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
We have three new ordinances. The first is ordinance 17-524, amend parks ordinance pertaining to fishing along the south side of the Fox River Walkway. Advisory Parks Board recommends approval, and staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on the first reading. Deputy Mayor Herman? I'll wait for, Pam goes first. Does anyone want to speak to this?
I have no one registered.
Thank you. Now it's your turn, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. As a member of the Parks Board, I recommend that the council waive the ruling and approve this ordinance on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Was that a motion?
Yes, it's a motion. I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
A discussion? Would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
We will vote on ordinance 7-524, which I'll read again. Amend parks ordinance pertaining to fishing along the south side of the Fox River Walk. Advisory Parks Board recommends approval. Staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on the first reading. And before we vote, there should be a slide showing the Riverwalks, so everyone knows the area that we are. Deputy Mayor Herman, since you're in the Parks Board, would you like to kind of explain the boundaries?
Yes. This is actually from, it will be along the south side of the Riverwalk from the Oregon Street Bridge, west 1,950 feet, along the south side of the Riverwalk from Oregon Street Bridge, east 425 feet, and along the north side of the Riverwalk from Main Street to Jackson Street. So basically, this section has never been open to public fishing, and we had a request from the owners of the Morgan District to retain the right to allow no fishing there so that future developments would not be impacted by potentially fishermen. But there is land use agreements for the Riverwalk and things like that, so Parks Board felt that as long as it's never been open to fishing, it made sense to just keep it that way since the owners requested that. The Parks Board voted 6-0 in favor of it.
Would you please take the role?
Yeah. Just a question, Deputy Mayor, if we could change that potentially, if we do find out that the land use is changing for future development, we could revisit this opportunity, correct?
Correct. It is an ordinance, and any ordinance can be rescinded and amended and changed.
Very good. Thank you.
Would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
The next is ordinance 17-525, and there will be no action taken on it at this meeting. It's modify parking regulations on Leeward Court West, Northwestville Street, and West Sixth Avenue. Pam, did anyone want to address this?
No.
Okay. Next is ordinance 17-526, and again, there will be no action taken on this item tonight. It is canceled December 26, 2017 council meeting. We have a number of new resolutions. The first is 17-527, approve River East Neighborhood Plan. Plan Commission recommends approval. And Pam, is there anyone who would like to address this pending, this new resolution?
I have no one registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just think it's great that we have, you know, that our neighborhood associations continue to grow and expand and do great things for the city.
Would you please take the, did you want to say something?
No.
Would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is Resolution 17-528, approve Miller's Bay Neighborhood Streetscape Vision Plan. Again, Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam, did anyone sign up to speak to this new resolution?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to mention for those that might be in the audience and then listening on TV, how do we fund these projects after neighborhood associations work and put them together? First off, what the plan does is it identifies various activities that may involve future funding allocations through healthy neighborhood funds, CDBG funding, and great neighborhood CIP funding to carry out such activities. So there's a multitude of ways the city funds these, but all these are just kind of plans moving into action items, and as they come forward, then council approves, like we did earlier tonight, there was some funding approved for the neighborhood out there to tie in a sidewalk, walkway to the county park. So that's what's the neat thing and exciting thing about it, because the neighbors are the ones talking about their neighborhoods, and that's the important thing. And so, just wanted to bring that up of how we fund some of these initiatives. Thank you, Mayor.
Would you please take the role?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is Resolution 17-529, approve amendment to tax incremental District Number 31 Development Agreement and Ground Lease Agreement with Fox Valley Pro Basketball, Inc. Pam, did anyone register to speak to this resolution?
Yes. Yes, we have Greg Pierce, 115 Westwind Drive, Nino.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having time to consider this tonight. I just wanted to go on record and walk through what this is about and where we're at with it. Again, the original agreement going back when we did this now, almost a year ago when we began discussions, was to, as we looked at sites throughout the city, to find a way to make it work, to begin a redevelopment of the Buckstaff property. The only way that was going to happen would be in city involvement to make sure that we had remediation of the issues that were on that site. This deal that we have in front of us was about that, and the costs that we've seen so far and what's before you today are the costs we've had to be able to build on that site. Without this TIF and without what the council has done already, we would have never built on this site. And so again, we thank you for your support in the past, and wanted to address what we have now. This is the last time you'll see my lovely face before you on this issue, is that we've, this is going to be the last of what it took to get us to this point. Also, I wanted to bring up too, in negotiations as we've talked through this with the city, we have added in two things that I think greatly benefit the city in this amendment that you may not have caught right off the bat, which number one is, we are changing the language to allow for a special assessment, which in the first agreement, we did not have, which will cost us $215,000 that we will get assessed on the sidewalks and other stuff in the neighborhood. In the first agreement, that was not there. Actually, there was a prohibition against a special assessment. So one of the things we gave on this was to provide that back. Also, in working through it with a city attorney, we have now reduced the timeframe at which it will take to pay this back. At first, I mean, the first draft was 23 years. With this addition, if this gets approved, we would actually extend it out to 27 years. With what's before you now, this will be paid off in 20 years. I didn't do the math, but the interest savings to be able to cut it back and the deal that we have in front of you, I think also was something we wanted to provide the city to give you more certainty on how this TIF will perform. So again, we appreciate your consideration and thank you.
Pam, is there anyone else?
No.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
I see no one has pushed the button to speak, so it will...
Mr. Roloff, Mr. Davis, do you have anything to add?
Yeah.
I think that Mr. Pierce explained pretty well.
I think he explained it very well. The cooperation that Mr. Pierce and his organization have given us has been outstanding. This project has been a very fluid project. Time has been of the essence from day one. The delays that we had getting the announcement kind of put us in a frozen mode where we couldn't really act, and yet, once we did get the okay from the Bucks, our deadline never changed. So if you were looking at this as if every other TIF district that we've had, all we're doing here is assisting them with the cost to bring this property up to beyond an even keel with other properties elsewhere in the city. So the fact that they're staying downtown is a wonderful thing, and Mr. Pierce's faith in the downtown is to be commended. What we're paying for is nothing, there's a term called going vertical, paying for the building itself. This is to cover none of those building costs. This is to cover to get the property in a condition that it's buildable, and that's the additional cost that Mr. Pierce incurred, similar to the costs we incurred for the public improvements, are really what we're talking about here. They will be paid for with the tax increment, just like all the other ones we did on Marion Road and other ones in the downtown area. And it was very important, because if we didn't have that TIF support, they would have extraordinary costs that would make this project cost prohibitive. So that's really what this does, and I think it's beneficial to let people know about that.
Just to follow. So could you just repeat the comment about what these costs are covering, that it's not covering the vertical costs of the building?
Thank you, because that really is the key.
I mean, that's not, there's been some...
That we're paying for the building, Mr. Pierce has done his fundraising for the building itself, all we're doing, if we had the time, if we had multiple years to do this, we would have spent years, years, literally, cleaning up the site, getting it ready for development. Instead, we had a very short timeframe, so the numbers were still very fluid. But all we're doing here is assisting him in getting property that we briefly owned, or actually, we still own. We still own because we're going through the whole lease-purchase arrangement. He's cleaning up the site to get it in developable shape so that it can be developed, but then he's developing on top of it. So we're compressing it all into a very short timeframe to meet a very tight schedule that we had to get this project off the ground.
So then, and maybe this might be better directed at Mr. Pierce, so then the naming rights that were just announced yesterday that were kind of targeted in some comments lately, that those are to help the vertical costs, not the costs of building out the infrastructure which would allow for the development of this property. Is that correct?
I suspect it's about operational costs, but I think that's Mr. Pierce's question to answer. Typically, naming rights are about operational costs. That's my, that's my knowledge and experience, but Mr. Pierce could confirm or deny that. I don't hear him yelling, so I'm guessing I'm right.
Yeah, is it, because you know, there was some comment about that, you know, that why would you, why would we need this funding to help out after you just, you know, signed this agreement?
Well, with an arena, how you pay for it is advertising and selling space, and the marketing of the arena with the naming rights is just one of those things. So, no, it's just, it's for operational costs and selling, advertising. That confirms what I thought. Thank you.
Councilperson Allison Osby?
Thank you. Just to let council know and the citizens who are here and watching that, in regards to this, I will certainly vote present, as I do have a business relationship with the president of Fox Valley Pro Basketball.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Robbie, you're heavily involved with the street improvements and some of the things that are being worked on. This being the third time that this TIF has had to come forward to council for consideration, what are some of the things that we found that added additional costs to the project?
I am not familiar of the site conditions at all, so I could not answer in regards to what was found on site.
Do we have anybody from staff that would have known what, why these costs went up so drastically?
Well, the...
I mean, you're listing paving, sidewalk, water mains, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, driving lights, street signals. I mean, you know, I guess, I just want to let the citizens know what we found and what changed the TIF so drastically. I mean, it's unbelievable what Mr. Pierce is doing on his end. I mean, he agreed initially of no assessments, and now he's agreed to pay assessments. I mean, we get citizens constantly... I mean, we get citizens constantly yelping about their assessments. He didn't even have to do that and he's doing that. So, what changed the scope of the project so drastically?
Maybe Allen can describe it.
If you recall, we had a lot of poor soils in that area. And the more you excavate, you have to decide just how much soil you have to bring in and usually don't find that until you start digging it out because you don't have perfect knowledge of what's on a site, similar to the right of way. Until you start digging, you really don't know what you have. You could take samples, but that's still a sample. You could miss huge swaths of area that have to be excavated. And I think that was the biggest thing that they found is that they've got to excavate, they basically had to excavate the entire site.
Okay, and then we are not doing the water main as big as we were planning on it on Fourteenth, is that connected to our issue with the railroad? It says deduction for Fourteenth Street Water Main.
Where's your reading?
Four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
He's reading out. That deduct there.
I think it doesn't serve that.
Yeah, that deduct for the water main on Fourteenth is not an arena-related cost, it is a water utility-related cost. So, because the water main on Fourteenth is not specifically to serve the arena, the utility is providing that funding, which is why it's a deduct to the TIF cost.
Okay. And then, this TIF is a pagel TIF, so they have criterias that they have to meet as the project continues to move on, correct?
If you could, maybe, I want to make sure I understand.
It's a pagel TIF, so just re-explain again how that works so that the citizens understand how a pagel TIF works for the city and for the developer.
With a pagel TIF, for starters, the developer is fronting those costs, not the city. So, we're front, Mr. Pierce is actually fronting some of the public improvement costs in addition to everything that's on the site itself, he's fronting those. Those costs that were the extraordinary costs that Mr. Peck referred to, those will be reimbursed to Fox Valley Basketball through the TIF, which means as tax increment gets generated, that'll be used to pay off the money that the arena has fronted for that as well. So, that puts the city at much less risk because it is a pay-as-you-go, as a tax increment gets created, it'll get paid off. If it doesn't get created, then it doesn't get paid, then they don't get paid off.
Okay. No, like I said, I'm totally supportive, I just want to get some of these things out there. As other council members have mentioned, we've gotten some native emails towards this and I just want to make sure that we're on the record of that this is a positive project moving forward and will definitely be a huge impact in the city of Oshkosh. I think the naming rights, I talked to Mr. Pierce today on the phone, the naming rights, just as we talked about what Oshkosh Corp does in the community, it looks like the Menominee Tribe is going to reciprocate in some ways. I believe there's going to be a museum there with some of their artifacts and things and so, it's a great opportunity because actually Winnebago, having been a Winnebago County deputy, the Menominee Tribe, some of their land here was their original land, so, thank you very much.
Would you please take the roll?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Present.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried five, one, present.
Next is Resolution seventeen dash five thirty, approve specific implementation plan for plant development, electronic message center at three thousand one South Washburn Street, Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this resolution?
I have no one.
Bring it back to the council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Would you please take the roll?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution seventeen dash five thirty-one, amend twenty seventeen capital improvement program, purchase of conical section for centrifuge number one, fifty thousand dollars. Pam, is there anyone who...
I have no one.
Bring it back to the council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Has anyone lit up the screen, so would you please, did you want to say something?
I'm good, I'm good.
Would you please take the roll?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is Resolution seventeen dash five thirty-two, approve purchase of conical section for centrifuge number one from Alpha Laval, Inc., forty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Pam?
I have no one.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Has anyone from the council wishes to speak to this? So, would you please take the roll?
Pansky?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next is Resolution seventeen dash five thirty-three, award bid for Public Works Contract Number Seventeen dash zero three, two Myron Construction Company, Inc., for Mary Jewel lift station and park shelter, two million, nine hundred, eighty-one thousand, four hundred and three dollars and sixty cents. Pam, did we have anyone sign up?
No, I do not have anyone.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
Mr. Godey, could you kind of explain a little bit about the lift station? I know it's a bathroom, also the Parks Board was weighing in on this, the bathroom portion of the site is for Mary Jewel Park and potentially the expansion of the Riverwalk or bike pedestrian paths, but for the lift station, please.
Sure, certainly, the lift station is intended to, it will replace the current very small lift station that is located on the west side of Pinocchio Drive, just south of Rainbow Drive. It's almost entirely underground. The need for this lift station has really been driven by the Sawyer Creek dredging project that occurred in two thousand twelve. During the preparation for that project, we discovered that there was a sanitary sewer pipe on piles, literally within the waterway of Sawyer Creek that had collected sediment and essentially created a dam within the creek over the past fifty, seventy-five years that it had been in the ground. That was removed and a temporary siphon was put in to serve the area. That siphon is a very high maintenance item. It is not of adequate capacity and size during heavy work or other events to prevent backups. So, we are, need to get that replaced and removed.
Okay, and does this, thinking long-term, because I believe we're going to be able to come to agreement with Oshkosh Corp, would this have any impact on their infrastructure?
We would anticipate that area would be drained by a gravity to a sanitary sewer that is at the intersection of Westfield and Oshkosh Avenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilperson Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, Deputy Herman asked the question for me, I was going to ask staff to come up, it's not every day that we see a three million dollar line item on our consent agenda. And then, not only that, but there, I was asked a couple of times within the last couple of days, what exactly we were, if we were indeed building a two-point-nine million dollar bathroom. And so, I was anticipating asking the question to clarify because that's something that I don't think any community would just purchase. So, thank you, Mr. Godey, for explaining that to the citizens.
Would you please take the roll?
Pansky? Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried five, one.
Next is council discussion, direction city manager and future agenda items. The first are the budget workshops on October thirty and thirty-one from eight AM to five PM.
Don't really have anything to report on that. The councils received the budget and the schedule of department heads. Staff will be prepared to talk about their budget requests, any possible reduction should council request those and as well as any enhancements to their budget. So, they'll be all day and we'll have, we'll feed you at the beginning and middle of the days to keep you nourished and energized for the day.
Councilman Peck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As indicated at a previous meeting, the thirtieth and thirty-first, that's the end of the month, so it's usually a pretty busy time at work. So, I may be absent for a period of time for the budget session, but I will be there for most of it.
Then we have a report on survey of boards and commissions.
Council had asked, after we had made the presentation on the boards and commissions, to survey board members, council members and staff regarding interest in the various options that were presented before council. And those are in your packet. I'm just going to point out a few because if there's something that didn't generate a lot of interest, I don't think it necessarily bears discussion too much. There was no, I don't think there was anyone that was overwhelming in favor of one or the other, but the board members had weighed in on some of these and some of the ones that seemed to generate some interest was to consolidate the parking utility and the traffic review advisory board. Some people had no opinion. We took, we did another summary with people's no opinion taken out just to get that, an understanding. And with that, in that case, eighty-seven percent of the people who had an opinion were in favor of doing that. So, that one is probably the closest of being overwhelming than anything. There were some other ones that were at least talked about, perhaps folding the Grand Opera House Advisory Board into the Landmarks Commission, that one seemed to generate a good deal of interest. There was a lesser opinion on eliminating the board completely, but I don't think it was enough. When you take a look at it, the opinion about folding it into the landmarks, I think there's a belief that the landmarks could provide value for the improvements because that's pretty much what the Grand Opera House Advisory Board does. The way I had worded this in the survey, as I looked at the results, had to do with consolidating the Rental Housing Committee, said with the Equal Housing Opportunity Commission. In retrospect, it did get a lot of interest and it was worthy of noting, but it probably would have been better worded to consolidate the Equal Housing Opportunity Commission into the Rental Housing Committee. The Rental Housing Committee has gotten off the ground, it's generating a lot of interest, there will be activity for that group. The Equal Housing Opportunity Commission hasn't had a meeting in fifteen years. So, rather than folding this brand-new committee that is generating interest into a committee that hasn't been active, perhaps just the opposite should occur, maybe you reword it or something, but it just seems to be that that's the group that is actively engaged and we want to encourage that. The other one was interesting, even though the mayor and I have had discussions with boards and commissions chairs over the last couple of years about interest and everything, one of the options was to remove the council liaisons. Quite honestly, there wasn't a great deal of interest in that. Even though it had been discussed by the chairs, the board members themselves weren't that thrilled about that idea. So, they must, they still love you, that's the good news. But whether you now want to do that or not is really going to be up to the council, but there didn't seem to be a huge amount of support for that. And then, as far as, there seemed to be some pretty good support for making the Long Range Finance Committee an ad hoc committee, with one group's exception, it was you. Only five of the seven of you voted, I don't know which ones did or didn't, I don't necessarily think that's relevant, but it was on a three-to-two vote. So, that's something I guess you're going to have to think about yourselves. The rest of the boards and commissions felt that maybe that was worth making it more ad hoc. And I know there have been discussions about things right now that maybe Long Range Finance may be taking a look at. I don't think it takes away the discussion about whether it should be ad hoc or not, but given the fact that the council was the only group that said, well, hold on a second, that's going to be up to you as council members, if that's something you want to do. I'm not sure if you have any more questions, those seem to be the ones that jumped out. Oh, I'm sorry, one last one. In terms of changing membership criteria for local option committees, what that means is would you allow non-residents to be involved for your local option ones, which are formed by council, they're entirely up to you. There seemed to be some moderate support for that, not overwhelming, but again, that's a policy call for the council. You've got just a little bit of direction from the group, but certainly not overwhelming. That's all I have at this point.
Deputy Mayor Herman?
So, Mr. Roloff, what are you looking for from council, sense of direction? Do you want us to say, okay, if it's got fifty percent or more support, we go with the question of what it says or, you know, like, obviously, it's overwhelming that parking utility and traffic review should be together. Looks like the Grand Opera House, as you mentioned, with the advisory board and the landmarks makes sense. There was some bike pet maybe, but I guess, what are you looking for from us? Or do you want to put something together in a, somewhat of a format, I mean, recommendation? Because we'll be notifying, you know, we'll probably have to, how many members serve on these boards then after that, because I don't know that we can have fifteen, twenty people on these boards.
Correct.
So, I know some are small, but some have probably eight, ten people on and, you know, some have been on a long time, you don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, especially citizens because they volunteer.
I think that's the real key there is, and so, here's my suggestion because there is a personal element to this. My suggestion, that would be the appropriate liaison, bring this information back to their board and get some input. That's a tough discussion to have with a board that's, you know, diligently coming to their meetings and doing their job, but it may be appropriate to do that. I know that transit has discussed this as a possibility, but then, pretty much it said transit should remain on its own, but traffic and parking, I can't remember, who are the two liaisons for that?
You mean council members?
Yeah, yeah.
For traffic.
Your traffic and who's parking?
I think the authorities.
Okay, so maybe it'd be appropriate for the liaisons to go back and just say, look, here are the results, what are your thoughts? The other ones that I didn't mention, quite honestly, I don't know if there's enough support. My suggestion would be, don't even worry about those, only the ones I mentioned and only if you think these are worth doing. If you don't think there's any worth doing, let's just drop it. But certainly, I think it would be appropriate to go back to the boards and get their input.
Maybe the other thing too would be to check with your city staff and see how many times they couldn't get a quorum at a couple of these. And if they were scheduled to have a meeting and they had to cancel due to lack of quorum or a lack of subject, nothing to discuss and use that as a criteria also?
We do have that information and that was, I think, where you got some of the higher votes on parking and traffic, although traffic's pretty good about getting together.
Yeah, they have, I've been on that one for four of my eight years.
But yeah, that was part of the, that was part of the survey as well.
Councilperson Allison Osby?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I concur with Mark, I think it's a good idea for us to go back to our respective boards and commissions and talk with those that are currently serving. You know, I know a couple, over the years, I've served on different boards as time has gone by and, you know, some of them that have been on for quite a while truly enjoy serving, but some of them have just said that they've continued to serve, not because they don't necessarily enjoy it, but because we haven't had other community or citizens step to the plate and apply to serve, so they have felt obligated. So, I think we should at least give those that have served, you know, a say, certainly in the matter. And I think some of them do agree that perhaps there might be an opportunity for some consolidation maybe.
So, I will direct staff to make sure that it's on the agenda, that'll give the good reminder for the council members when they see their agenda coming up, that they can, I suggest that you lead the discussion. I don't think it's appropriate for staff to do that. That really is a, it's such a policy issue, but I'll make sure that the staff puts it on the agendas, all the respective agendas that, of the groups that I just discussed. And then, after that, I guess, maybe the best thing to do is contact me and, you know, give me your feedback and then we can talk about how we do it. If one of those seems to be, let's do it, then it would be appropriate to direct staff to prepare an ordinance change and we might make some suggestions. I've seen this done before and what you do is, out of respect for the members, you start with a larger group and then as terms end, you start to trim it down. So, you may do a two- or three-year changeover so that everybody is allowed to serve their, the remainder of their terms. And if they resign or retire from that board, you just naturally take it down until it reaches its new normal. And maybe you make some of these commissions maybe an extra member or two, but you don't have it double the size, but, and that's how you really trim that down. And that'd be my suggestion as well. So, I'll get these on the respective boards and commission agendas. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the second opportunity for citizens to address the council. And I'll ask Pam if anyone has signed up to address the council.
I have no one registered.
And I won't read through all the jibber jabber in this thing. And I won't read through all the jibber-jabber in this thing. There were no council member announcements or statements unless something, someone has something to say at the last minute, at this point now, I'll turn to the city manager for any announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have the arena update, we talked a lot about that tonight, really, the, the outstanding issue right now is dealing with the railroad, Mr. Robby briefly mentioned, you know, Fourteenth Avenue, we've reached out to Congressman Growth Man's office, I've also made some contacts with Senator Johnson's office, and seen what we can do, because the water isn't, the water isn't urgent, because that's more of a loop, but the storm sewer is definitely a concern, because you could put that area at risk of flooding, if we have, you know, early spring rains and things haven't thawed out or something like that, we could have some real issues, now, we have that other places that we have that risk, but I don't think that's the way we want to start out the arena, we anticipate, weather permitting, that pretty much the areas around, immediately around the arena will be done, it's really Fourteenth, and leading up to Fourteenth, that is, is the major concern, James, you feel pretty comfortable, weather permitting, everything okay?
Weather permitting, absolutely, what I'm, what I've got from the, the field staff is, you know, in the immediate vicinity, Eleventh to South Park and South Main in between there, they feel very confident, as long as Mother Nature cooperates, that our contractor will get the public infrastructure done.
Councilman Peck.
Mr. Roloff, what is the, what is the response been from our representatives in Washington related to this?
They've been very receptive, and they want to help us, they know it's a, it's a thick bureaucracy, not necessarily governed by the government, but I think they can influence it, to me, they're, they're our best shot to influence it, because they are federally regulated, but can they specifically order them to do it, I don't necessarily think so, but can they influence it, that's what I'm hoping for, and they, then they've expressed willingness to, to assist us in, in doing whatever coaxing necessary. Oh, well, go ahead, that's great.
Yeah, one of the representatives of Congressman Growth Man's office was actually in the building today, and I did get an opportunity to sit down and discuss with him, they have met with some of the CN staff in Washington, and, you know, kind of, you know, got a little bit of the, the same feedback that I think Channel Two had gotten from their press people in Green Bay last week, so we got an opportunity to sit and discuss, you know, some of the concerns that we're seeing, and how it compares to other projects in the neighborhood, for example, Fifteenth Avenue, just five years ago, was virtually the same installation, just one pipe size smaller, you know, so those are some of the things that he was going to go back and have some more conversations with in Washington.
Councilman Peck.
So we had a TV station from Green Bay involved in this?
One of the reporters, one of the reporters from Channel Two contacted, I think it was your office last week, Mark, and he ended up having a conversation with me, we traded some emails, and then he asked if he could just come down and ask some questions.
Okay, interesting.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to let people know, we're not the only community, they had a breakout session at the league conference on dealing with railroads, and that room was full, there was probably forty people in that breakout room, every one of them were having issues, and it was really targeted at Canadian National, all the other railroad companies seemed to be pretty receptive, pretty good, I mentioned about our railroad transload, and they were excited to hear about that, and other communities said, geez, man, we could do something like that, so we're the first, so we'll take that, but it was interesting to hear that we're not alone on this issue, and mostly, they talked about rough crossings, and like we have with Irving, and they finally fixed that, and I know that, I think they redid Snell Road now, which is actually in the town, that part of the tracks, but that was just recently done, but the one thing they brought up is if a council does a resolution, the railroad does not like that, so maybe we should do a resolution, asking them to work with our public works department to get it done, because I think you mentioned it, the flooding issue, and I think that's the key thing we would need to want to stress, that potentially, the impact could affect not only the new arena, but surrounding neighborhoods and things like that, so it's, it's a huge issue that way, and I think if we did something on that order, it might garner some attention.
Did they mention that the resolutions have to be in English and French?
No, they didn't say that.
Okay, I'm going to follow up with you on that, because, I mean, if there's some value to doing it, let's, let's.
And even on a local level, we had a chance to talk with Representative Hints from the fifty-fourth district, the mayor and I, we mentioned to him, and he was going to reach out to Railroad Commission, at least, and see what he could do on his end, even though it's a federal issue.
Yeah, railroads tend to overreact and then slow down their bureaucracy even more, so it's, it's very disappointing, but I think we have people on it, so I'll be happy to put a resolution on next meeting for, for that purpose.
Councilman Peck.
Would potential flooding, could that impact their crossings?
Absolutely, and one of the storm sewers that, there were two storm sewers crossing the railroad at Fourteenth Avenue, as a part of our construction, we were working to take one out of service, as we were working on it, it failed, the second one is of the same size and same age, but even as we've brought that concern to their attention during our conference calls, you know, we're, we're not sure if we're being heard or not.
And somebody mentioned, you know, the transload, that's Wisconsin Southern Railroad, they've been very cooperative, you know, I want to make sure that they, it's understood, not all railroads are, are being disruptive to us.
As they said, it's what was talked about, the breakout session.
The other item I have, Mr. Mayor, is our collection office has historically been opened at seven thirty, and the history of that was to accommodate the opening of building inspections, because from a customer service standpoint, it was important to get our, our building inspection office to open earlier in the morning for, for contractors, now we have the capability of payments being made up there in building inspections, and as we took a look at the numbers of people that have been using the collections office between seven thirty and eight AM, has been just awful, so what we're going to do is, we're going to move their office hours back to eight o'clock, it'll actually give us better coverage during the eight to four-thirty hours anyway, and we're going to be starting that next, next Monday, so just wanted to let everybody know.
All right, thank you, now Deputy Mayor Herman, you would like to do a motion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I move that following the adjournment of this meeting, the council may convene in the closed session to discuss bargaining options, strategy, parameters, and terms related to the negotiation of possible agreement for, for the redevelopment of a portion of Lakeshore Municipal Golf Course pursuant to Section nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent E, of the Wisconsin State statutes where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you please take the roll.
Pansky.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six.
A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.